We just had an inaugural party there. First to see you.
It's like seven o'clock this morning. Your headphones ready?
Yes, sir.
We stand for prayer and both the legions. Our kind and gracious heavenly father, we bow before you to offer praises unto you. During this time of the year, we can't help but think of that child that was sent to us for the forgiveness of our sins. We thank you, Lord, for that undying faith you've had in us and the blessings that you've bestowed upon us. You do ask, Lord, if you're sick or shut in, you lay your healing hand upon them with comfort in this time of need. These things I pray in Jesus' holy and precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Court call roll.
Flowers?
Here.
Kennel?
Yes.
Wright?
Here.
Phillips?
Here.
Householder?
Here.
Harp?
Here.
Okay. Reading and disposition of the previous minutes, counsel, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion we dispense with the reading of the minutes from the previous meeting.
Second.
Motion by a householder, second by Phillips, dispense with the reading of the previous minutes. Chairman call for any deletions, additions, or corrections.
On the second page, Mike said I was listening in the cell phone. It's at the top. Oh, third, actually, third page, the first bullet point.
And I know that. I know it's present.
Okay. You can utilize the typo.
Yep.
Anything else? Bring in the court call and roll.
Flowers?
Aye.
Kennel? Wright?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Householder?
Aye.
Harp?
Aye.
Motion carries. Minutes are approved as presented.
Mayor.
Mr. Wright?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add ordinance 29-2017.
Motion on the floor to add ordinance 29-17?
2017.
2017. I hear a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Harp. Questions or comments? Mr. Wright?
Under comments, mayor, we had passed ordinance 28-2017, which was for the health insurance for the village employees, and the rate was at 18.3% increase, and that has now been lowered to 13.8%. So this is basically just to effect that change.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Bring in the court call and roll.
Flowers?
Aye.
Kennel?
Yes.
Wright?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Householder?
Aye.
Harp?
Aye.
Motion carries. Ordinance, or the agenda is amended. Citizens' comments. Any citizen which should address council tonight?
Say something.
Alan looks really good with the Christmas lights.
Reading and referring of communications and our petitions. Any petitions to be presented? Any communications? Reported council committees and council representatives?
Mayor, one thing before you get into that. Can we make a motion to excuse the solicitor from tonight's meeting? Due to?
I'm sorry, I forgot that. Yes.
Illness?
Second.
Motion by Wright, seconded by?
Phillips.
Phillips? Excuse the solicitor. Questions or comments? Bring in the court call and roll.
Flowers?
Aye.
Kennel?
Yes.
Wright?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Householder?
Aye.
Harp?
Aye.
Passes. Solicitor is excused for tonight. Now we'll go into communication, or, excuse me, council committees and council representatives. Finance, Mr. Wright?
Mayor, finance has not met since our last meeting, but councilman Harp and myself did go to the Harp Board on December the 14th and make a presentation to them. So their board was not all in attendance, and basically they couldn't have, they didn't have a quorum, so myself and Mr. Harp will make another trip up there in January with, hopefully, the full board there to explain their finances to them and start to work on a plan to get some money back from them.
Okay.
So with that being said, mayor, I'd make a motion to pay bills dated from December 9th through December 22nd in the amount of $48,888.37 when funds become available.
A second.
Motion by Wright, seconded by Harp, pay bills when funds become available. Questions or comments?
Under comments, mayor. Sweet, commercial electronics for $3,000 was for a warranty service agreement on a voice recorder. $12,614 of Finley fire equipment for coats and pants for the fire department. I believe that was seven sets. Mahoney County District Board of Health lab test, $6,080. A Lex Bank was $2,126.51, and that's for the fuel for the fire department, the police department. And the rest of those are pretty much just generalized maintenance items.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Bring in the court call and roll.
Flowers?
Aye.
Kennel?
Yeah.
Wright?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Householder?
Aye.
Harp?
Aye. Motion carries. Bills will be paid when funds become available. Anything else, Mr. Wright?
Nope, that's it, mayor.
Legislative, Mr. Kennel?
No meeting, mayor.
Capital improvement, Ms. Householder?
No meeting, mayor.
Annexation, business, and development, Ms. Phillips?
No meeting, but I did reach out to Sarah Lowery, who is Sherida Brown's representative. Basically, the legislation, the Water Infrastructure Flexibility Act, which Sherida Brown is the co-sponsor of, passed the Senate in the fall, but now it's in the House in the subcommittee on the environment, so it's stuck in there. No action has been taken. She will keep me updated. I'm signed up for alerts if it is on the floor and they do anything. There's also a contact here of Andy Biggs from Arizona. He is a representative. He is the House Committee of Science-Based Technology. He's the one that's on the subcommittee for the environment, so that's another contact I can reach out to that I will do. But as of right now, that's all I have.
Very good. Service maintenance, Mr. Flowers?
No meeting, mayor.
Safety, Mr. Harp?
No meeting, mayor.
Park and Recreation, Ms. Phillips?
Parks Board did meet on December 14th. Councilman Harp, councilman Wright were there. They did discuss the budget with them and kind of just explain the breakdown of where we were and how they function throughout the year based on money from the general fund. So as David said, they did not have a quorum, so we're hoping next meeting, everyone can be there so we can really discuss and kind of brainstorm some ideas. The only other thing, we did have some feedback from a community member, and then they discussed needing to renew contracts for the Salvation Army, the Lions Club, and the senior group that's there. So I'm gonna have, I'll get those to Teresa. They want her to look them over before we do anything, so that was it.
Very good. Planning and zoning, Ms. Householder?
No meeting, mayor.
Civil service, Mr. Flowers?
No meeting.
Veterans Memorial, Mr. Wright?
I have no meeting, mayor.
And retention committee, myself, and that was no meeting. When does the department heads have their stuff in to you or command?
Well, I have some questions. One of the councilmen, the councilman Phillips mentioned in Egypt is starting to work on it, but guidelines we need to know exactly what is to be pushed. So I thought, I had given to me here to, I guess, but I think the guidelines have come out.
Yeah, she's never done it, so she's just not sure what she should keep.
All right. Yeah, because I think they're confused as to what to keep and what to purge.
Yeah. At the last meeting was the first sign, and she was not sure what, so.
Okay. All right, very good. Well, that concludes the community reports and council representatives' management report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Councilman Wright mentioned, we did get a reduction in our Anthem health insurance coverage from 18.3%, 13.8%. That's just a highlight real quick. The list total was a monthly payment of $25,694, which is about $8,200 annually, that's minus the employees payroll contributions. So the plan will renew effective January 1st. Mrs. Scott, Dora Scott, did make her final revolving loan payment of $200, and now she is paying in full on account. I had another phone call from the attorneys, the attorney that's handling Turner May Building situation, contacted me, and wanted to know if the village would be interested in buying the property for going down. I said, well, I think that's something the council's gonna have to make a decision on. The con part of that is we would inherit the demolition costs of the structure, which would be quite expensive, in addition to the fact that if we do it as a public entity, then we're also talking asbestos abatement, which is extremely expensive. The pro part of that would be we would get, you know, be able to use the real estate perhaps, which wasn't clear for the public, but I think the cost is, the cost we're hearing, the cost we're hearing. I wanted to get up, come back to council, so I could give them the benefit of the search.
I would say no.
Is that a motion, Mr. Harp?
I would make a motion that we do not pay.
I second that. I second that.
Okay, yeah.
Motion by Harp, seconded by Flowers, not, the village not to purchase.
Right.
Attorney made that.
I have a question.
Yes.
Who's the lawyer you're talking to?
Shepard?
The name escaped me at the moment, but he called, this was the second time, he called back, and it had been in my report to council on whether or not.
Is it attorney Shepard?
I'm not sure if it is.
Sounds sure.
But anyway, he said he did represent Turner May, and they.
If we turn it down, what is the attorney, what's gonna happen to the bill?
We proceed based through the county, which handles the commercial buildings, and I believe Teresa Tolson is involved in that either, so. So I mean, I can contact the county and ask what the status is. I know that John Shumey has been looking into it.
I think we got an adjudication order on that building also from the Mahoney County Building Department, and they're asserting, right? So, yeah, next thing will be is, it'll have to go to court, and they'll be forced to take it down, or we'll have to take it down.
And then get reimbursed.
And then get reimbursed for it.
We start that proceeding now, or?
Well, we've already started it, really, by having Mahoney County come over, because it's a commercial building, they have to do the inspections on that. So I think in our packet here, maybe a month ago, we got a whole stack of them, which included Shudy and the other one on Oregon Avenue.
I might have something interested in buying that. Can they buy it for a buck, too?
I could pass it on if you don't have.
Well, attorney Shepard is the contact I have.
I would recommend, yeah, contact him, and he'll give you that one. Whoever would get that, I guess, would inherit the.
It'll be the understanding tear down.
That'd be great. Okay, if he does contact me.
We got a motion on the floor. Any other questions or comments? Bring in the court call and roll.
Flowers?
Aye.
Kennel?
Yes.
Wright?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Householder?
Aye.
Harp?
Aye.
Motion carries. I've got an answer, Mr..
Thank you. Just want to let you know that the project manual arrived last week with Quetzal Engineering's for the California resurfacing project. I don't want to go through the details, we've gone through them a couple times before. I will say that the bid specifications are being drafted right now in preparation for January to February bid, and then once that's done, I'll have to ask council for approval on the project, and then once that's done, we should see it done no later than July of 2018, so that's in motion. In lieu of Salageddon's absence, Judy Wark has completed all POs, all the invoices and the checks for the last bill payments for the year. The checks and bill reports were forwarded to the clerk of council for dissemination to council, which you have tonight. Mrs. Wark also posted all pay-ins, completed all of the sections one, two, and three transfers from the transfer appropriation legislation, and once the 2018 budget is passed, she'll start inputting those figures into the correct line item for the next year's expense report, so it's like we're good to go. We received some feedback from Ryan Bertani from OEP Engineering Infrastructure, concerning our emergency hypopolic feed system. He basically stated that everything is in order for this feed system, and that they're pretty much good to go. There was some questions on a scale containment versus a concrete containment for the chemical measure, and then there's a very lengthy diatribe in the report explaining our recommendations on how to proceed with that. So that's already been submitted to EPA, and we should get back to them shortly, and that's, as far as I'm concerned, a shrink wrap. The last item is the total income tax revenue as of December 26th was $1,619,312.55, so we're right on target with our projections for the year, and we're good to go. And this is my formal report.
Any questions from managers?
Yes, mayor. Rick, have we heard anything from EPA regarding our expenses monthly that we're currently paying that we asked for relief on?
Part of the holdup has been the back and forth with the EPA on control, pollution control study. We submitted it based for time, if it can get back for additional amendments, once we adhere to the first amendment. So as soon as that's done and that's approved, then we have the technical information that's been approved by them, then we can re-submit the letter, and then hopefully we will get relief from laws 437. So I'm hopeful, but it's getting very close to a shrink wrap right now. Last time I talked to Brett Norton, who's a senior engineer on the project, he's anticipating that it will go off result in the next two weeks. So I have other way to draft it, maybe through January, and by June of January, we should get a response, so that's been, we'll get that done. Wrapping that up, we'll save this about 128 years, and I'm very interested in having that done, so it's in motion, very much so.
Okay. Okay, we'll move into a report of other village officials. Mr. Sager, you have anything for council tonight?
No, sir.
Chief? Very good. Ordinances and resolutions.
Mayor, make a motion, we read by title only, ordinance 27-2017 and 29-2017.
Very good.
Second.
Motion by Wright, seconded by Flowers, read by title, excuse me, title only. Any questions or comments? Bring in the court call and roll.
Flowers?
Aye.
Kennel?
Yes.
Wright?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Householder?
Aye.
Harp?
Aye. Motion carries. This is ordinance 27-2017. This is an ordinance establishing appropriations for the municipality of Sebring for the fiscal year of 2018. Counsel, having heard the resolution, or, excuse me, the ordinance, what's your pleasure?
Mayor, make a motion, we adopt ordinance 27-2017 as read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, I know there's a motion on the table. Did we need to bring that back out onto the table before we, since it was tabled?
It was tabled until time certain, this is the time, correct?
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure that we didn't miss something.
We did bring it back. When it was tabled indefinitely, we would have added that.
All right.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll second the motion, by the way.
Okay. Seconded by Ms. Flowers. Questions or comments? Mr. Wright?
Under comments, mayor, we've held two public hearings, one prior to our last council meeting, and one this morning at 10:00, of which no resident showed up, so expect to read about it on Facebook probably tonight, for those of you who have Facebook, but we've beat the horse enough, so let's just move along and keep functioning, unlike our federal government.
I would mention that the total funds allocated or appropriated for 2018 are $5,55,183 to the village of Sebring. That's a whopping a lot of money. Any other questions, comments?
Just one, that this is a living document. It can be changed at any time and for the benefit of the village, but not to exceed. Feel that we need to stay on budget this year, and, you know, but changes need to be made. We know, we need to know where the money's coming from.
Any questions, comment? Court call and roll.
Flowers?
Aye.
Kennel?
Yes.
Wright?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Householder?
Aye.
Harp?
Ordinance passes. This is ordinance 29-2017. This is an ordinance amending ordinance 28-2017, authorizing directing municipal manager to enter into an agreement with the Anthem Blue Cross and Blue Shield to provide major medical services in requiring an emergency. This is sponsored by councilman Wright and finance committee.
Yours or mine? Those are mine.
Counsel, having heard the ordinance read by title only with an emergency clause, what's your pleasure?
Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the ordinance 29-2017 as read by title only with the emergency clause.
Second.
Motion by Wright, seconded by Harp, to adopt as read by title only with the emergency clause. Questions or comments?
Under questions or comments, mayor stated it's an amendment to 28-2017, taking the rate of increase from 18.3% down to 13.8%.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Court call and roll.
Flowers?
Aye.
Kennel?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Householder?
Aye.
Harp?
Ordinance passes with the emergency clause. We're into a resolution. This resolution reads, "A resolution honoring Betty Householder for her dedicated and faithful service as a councilmember for the village of Sebring, whereas councilmember Betty Householder saw public service and faithfully and diligently served the citizens of village of Sebring, and whereas Betty Householder sincerely and seriously given of her time and knowledge to serve the government for the past four years, and whereas Betty Householder has earned the respect of her colleagues for her tireless energy in promoting and sponsoring programs that have benefited and added to the improvement and further development of this village of Sebring. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council and municipality of Sebring, Mahoney County, Ohio, Section 1, that Betty Householder is hereby honored and commended for extraordinary service and commitment to the serving, or, excuse me, commitment to serving her community, which owes her a deep debt of gratitude for her willing service. Section 2, that her colleagues do hereby publicly honor Betty Householder for unsophistially giving of herself for the betterment of the community. And Section 3, that this resolution is introduced by unanimous consent of all council members, mayor, and the administration in the municipality of Sebring, with best wishes to her and her future endeavors. Council members, having heard this resolution read the 27th day of November, what's your pleasure?
I make a motion to accept the resolution as read.
Second.
Motion by Flowers, seconded by Wright, to adopt the resolution as presented. Any questions or comments?
Thank you very much, Betty.
Thank you.
Yes, Betty, thank you for your time and service, and I would like to present this to you. All those in favor of passage of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome, my dear.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
We appreciate you.
Thank you. It's been an honor. Thank you all.
Thank you for your service. Second call for citizens' comments. Any other business to come before council?
Is that the name? The shred day? Is that still on our agenda, the shred day?
Yes, as soon as we get a retention committee meeting and we get all the paperwork back from all the department heads. So we only have to do this. Cost of around $600 compared to the last time we did it. Okay?
Yeah, okay. It's still on the agenda, right?
Yes.
And then the controversy over the K-9 unit. What, is there a problem with that? I got all this stuff and emailed him, and is there a problem with that? And the police chief's here, and Seranovic is supposed to be here, and. Blind side of me, I guess you heard something on the streets? What's going on?
Mr. Mayor, if it pleases you.
Anybody in?
Can you put that in committee? For after the first year for us to look at?
Yes, I think that'd be the good thing. I don't think it'd be the best place to put it, be Mr. Harp's safety committee. Okay? K-9 unit, establishing a K-9 unit or a division. Okay, Mr. Harp, safety committee has that.
Yes, ma'am.
Guess the answer's that, huh?
The answer's that.
I just kinda emailed you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn if there's.
I had one, just one quick question.
What?
For Chief Harris. The neighborhood watch, I guess that's kicking off. Okay, well, I know in July is when we started talking about it, the Parks Board meeting, and you said you were gonna check into, like, the, because it's the National Sheriff's Association, like, template that they're following. How does that, how is that going to work? I know Officer Seranovic's gonna be the liaison, but how does that work?
A neighborhood watch is constructed and ran by the neighborhood, the neighborhood watch group.
Okay.
The police just provides a person to help, you know, to inform them of what they can and cannot do. The police department doesn't have anything to do with it.
Okay.
We provide, like, liaison officers, who'll be Officer Seranovic, that will meet with the group, and they meet, you know, go over their concerns, and bring that back to the police department, and then also tell them what, you know, they're entitled to do and what they can't do, and those types of things. There is a real nice program.
I do have the manual.
That Matt and I, yeah, and it would go with our dispatch. It's about a $5,000 program where any citizen in Sebring with a smartphone, if they see a crime, they can record that, it goes straight to our dispatch, and we see it in real time. But it's a $5,000 program that the neighborhood watch would have to get.
Could you send me, like, the name or whatever of that one?
Sure, it's called, it's called Black Ice.
Black Ice.
And it's a cloud program, but it goes right straight to dispatch. That way, if there's anybody, like, Marvin, like, was breaking in your car, if you happen to see him, go straight to us, and that way, you may not catch him, but we'll have their photos and everything, and be able to eventually get him, so.
Okay. Because I know they're trying to get volunteers, and I just, I don't know, but it makes me nervous, I guess.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Well, here's the thing, and that, again, that's what Officer Seranovic would do, is explain to them, it's a neighborhood watch.
Okay.
You can't intervene, you can't detain, you can't do anything like that to those individuals. If you see a crime in progress, you don't run up and say, hey, I'm gonna, you know, you either record it, or you call the police and let them. Now, once the police get there, those people are dismissed because we can't have them impeding the investigation or anything like that.
Sure.
It's just another set of eyes out there in the community that can see possibly things happening, so...
Okay, I'll touch base with Matt too then and see, okay, thank you.
Chief? Chief?
Yes.
Have you checked with the solicitor to see if this needs legislation to protect the officers that are coordinating this?